We will call this regular council meeting order at seven oh four. Sorry, we're running a little bit late. We'll call. All present with the section of councilman meets. Recognized visitors. Okay, welcome. Welcome again, Tim.
Lucas Becker.
Welcome again, Lucas. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay. Any items to a little from the consent agenda? Just a brief.
No.
Okay. Any additions to the agenda?
Main and Second Street, the she shed on city property. Plus, it also looks like it's this way from that. Looks like it's a truck shop. There's two vehicles with wheels off and doing brake jobs on city property. North end of town, parking again. Just so you know, when Jim gets on here, he's going to be on that warpath.
Are you going to speak to things for this building cleanup in mayor's comments?
I certainly can, sure.
Okay. And I think there's a few things on here I'd like to discuss that don't quite make sense to me.
You want to just discuss those in the next segment, which is our utility rate adjustment?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Well, let's roll into it. Twenty twenty-six utility rate adjustment and go ahead.
Okay. So, a couple of things. A lot of this is for Cassie. Capital outlay, I see half of a mini X, water meters, et cetera. Is there a part of a vac truck in that amount?
I put it in the street fund or the sewer fund.
Okay. Debt service, what, why, so?
We owe money for retainage to J.R. Massey, and then there was a nine thousand three hundred dollar payment to...
So, the retainage was left over from that project?
It was a loan from the Department of Health, I believe.
From the, under the Trax project?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's not, that's not a regular customer. That's not going to be an...
But why is that hitting this late?
Because it's a long story.
Okay, does that story include the fact that generally we are approved for an all expenses paid trip on that? So, we can't try and charge that back to our benefactors?
The contractor in question should have requested that retainage. Retainage is, in a big contract, they will, we will retain five percent
Sure.
of the overall contract and keep it in there to make sure that things get done. One, the contractor never requested it, so we sat on it up until this year. Two, there were some things that came up, thankfully, we still had it, that came up that had not been paid, that should have been paid, so we got them resolved. And coagulously, I was tired of holding on to that money that isn't ours.
Okay, yeah, and so that, I guess, gets to the core of it, because really, I understand that from a ink-on-paper standpoint, we care about where every dollar comes from, but from practical standpoint, I don't care about what money passes through the city. If it came from some other, and that's what I'm getting at here, is if the money came from someone else, not us, and it goes to someone else, not us, I don't care, and that's what I'm hearing here, is that it looks bad here, but this is not, this is not, this is not a year-over-year thing.
The same, like, eight, nine thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars of that money was a loan payment to the the Department of Commerce for the water system loan, so.
That's here?
Yeah.
You're looking at?
Debt service.
So, that's, that's not a...
So, that's not our money?
That was our money.
So, I guess the only of our money was the nine thousand...
So, we should be able to take that twenty-three...
How much was the retainage?
Well, it's still against this year, but for all practical purposes. We were trying to understand what a run rate thing is, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, that should be one thirty instead.
The retainage overall was about fourteen thousand.
Right, and the other half of it was what?
We alone fra, to Department of...
Department of Commerce.
Commerce.
For the water system loan.
It predates us.
By how long?
Was it?
That is the only payment that I've ever made or seen on here for that.
I'll have to get back to you. I don't know. I mean, we, it's...
I'm not familiar with their, David, am I imagining things? When did we have a water system loan in the last five years? I know we've had sewer system loans. That's definitely...
The only thing I can think of is the water system plan had some sort of loan component to it. That's all, that's the only one that I can think of.
I would appreciate that being investigated, because I don't...
We have the emergency staff.
Yeah, but I mean, we were pretty crisp on, a lot of it was all free, and I don't, I think I tried to keep a pretty good mental note of what we were going to have to pay for, but I don't know.
I'll track that down. Let you know.
Professional services, I'm assuming this is when we, this is DW calls, right?
I can make a printout of every transaction if you want.
Well, no, no, I'm just...
Professional fees are probably our operator.
No, professional services, we budgeted three thousand, and we're year-to-date, eight thousand six hundred fifty-two.
Professional services went to, it's mostly Emerald Creek, where they're professional contract water services. They bill us about eight hundred and fifty dollars a month for water, or water, and then sixteen fifty...
Do you have a print yours?
Right, okay, so that's right, but that's, that was a budgeting error on our part.
Yeah.
How did we? Because we had an operator before Emerald Services. I'm trying to figure out how we thought three thousand. We must have been putting that somewhere else, because we were with what's-her-face?
Yeah, Casey Maji.
Yeah, she wasn't free, so I don't know, yeah.
She's quite a bit more.
Okay, the only other thing that I'll mention here, first of all, I want to give kudos that this is, this is, like, the concept of getting numbers out of Springbrook and into human consumable form. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is a big help. And I guess I could have given this as private feedback, but I would say another thing that would be helpful is because we have actual year-to-date, something that would be helpful is to find a way to represent budget to date. Because something that I'm trying to do the math on in my head is like, when we're, like, okay, like revenues, like income, are we going to hit budgeted income? No, we're not, but it's going to get better than eighty-eight thousand, right? Because I'm looking at a budgeted number that's an annual number, and then I'm doing the math in my head to project out how close we're going to get to that by December thirty-first. So, something that would give us, you know, for our budget, where are we supposed to be at this point in the year? That would be helpful to kind of understand the more relevant number. Because otherwise, if you run, run those numbers in March or something like that, your expenditures will look great and your income will look terrible.
And Springbrook actually does show your percentage to budget.
Right, if you can understand all of their fifty thousand line items.
We should hit, we should hit a little over a hundred thousand by the end of December.
Right, yeah, we're going to be way...
About a hundred thousand six hundred.
Be thirty grand short approximately.
Where do we sit today on unpaid bills?
I haven't, if I can look, but I don't, I don't know. They're, they're obviously way down, and we're tightening up the belt on those further.
Well, just because...
Pretty much, we're following just selection. I'll look here, but...
Because that's got to be, when we're running these numbers on income, that's got to be a part of the listing too, right? Because if you're budgeting and you're saying, okay, we're going to set the rates, just like she told us to, and we go from ten percent not paying to twenty percent not paying, and then you look at this and say, we're way under on income, that's notable, but in some ways, it's not notable from a budgeting standpoint, because if everybody paid what they were supposed to pay, we would be right on track, right? So, that number needs to factor into that to understand, because there's theoretically money that is the cities that we are not in possessive possession of.
Yeah, it has tightened up a little bit. We did have one very large outstanding bill that was paid up in cash, so that was, that really put a big dent in our bill zone.
That's it, thank you.
Question, is that the only copy, or is that on the computers?
No, I can make another copy.
Yeah.
Because everything we're talking about, but... Thanks.
It was just super simplified. That was kind of what I was, I promised, right, can I get him something that was not from Springbrook and, you know, sorry it was...
That's, that's really helpful.
But I can, I can make, I can do any, any Springbrook reports for you that you want, like the info that you want, and then show you how it's broken down anytime.
I do think, though, budget to date would be really helpful on, on everything. And I'm not trying to make more work for you.
It's not more work. I was just, I went really super simplified, and I think I just went oversimplified.
Well, I want to commend, it's a great start. It's wonderful progress, so no, no criticism here.
I'm going to spitball here, Stephen, say, well, we've got one account, which is over six grand, that's a whole different conversation. But I would say the rest of them probably fall well under ten thousand in outstanding bills.
You're saying total ten thousand outstanding?
Everything else is less than ten thou, actually.
Wait, no, you're, you're...
So, we, we have one account that owes us six grand.
Okay, so, in total outstanding, we're in the ballpark of?
Sixteen.
Okay. Okay, so
Or less.
Cassie says we're on track to get to a hundred. So, then add sixteen to that, and that's our budget shortfall.
Correct.
Right.
Which was? Total budget?
Oh, about a hundred and sixteen.
Yeah, so really, we're getting, taking that...
We're closer than it looks.
Yeah, a lot closer.
It's not good, but it's not as bad.
Because when you look at this initially... Okay.
And just so you know, of that revenue, that I didn't factor into the remainder of the year, two thousand dollars of that revenue is late fees. Two thousand five dollars of that revenue is late fees. So, anybody who owes a balance of ten dollars or more when the bills come out gets a five-dollar late fee.
So, just one other question. We passed last meet, last meeting for the new pump and the other well. That is not reflected in here at all, correct? And those reserves are?
Those nineteen thousand of it?
I think, I mean, that should be in here, the nineteen thousand of, yeah, should be.
Yeah, that we made a quarter, we made a quarter of it.
Yeah.
But that, that came out of reserves, and the reserves were specifically for the fresh, the water system, correct?
I'll have to look at my notes, but didn't we determine that, Cassie?
It wasn't general fund reserves, it was
The water reserves.
Water reserves.
That you wanted to turn out of there.
Yeah, there was enough to cover that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's over ninety thousand dollars in reserves.
Okay.
But it was for seventy...
Just for water? Okay. It's all becoming painfully clear.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, and I, we all need to thank our predecessors for diligently putting money aside.
And also wherever you got the grant for the new pump.
Well, fortunately, this one was, was covered in.
Yeah, that's where you got that, that's, it was great.
So, I know we're not going to pass anything on this, so any other discussion on this topic?
Yes, I just would really like to make sure there's some clarity here. I'm so sorry. I don't like feeling like we're not on the same page. So, I can't take any money out of reserves without approval of council. So, the nineteen thousand dollars, which was the twenty-five percent for irrigators ink, is included in the capital outlay costs. The other stuff in there is half of the cost of the mini X and the water meters and the supplies needed to connect those water meters. So, all that's capital outlay.
Well, and so this is, so that's, that's the thing, is as we tease this out, it gets better. It gets, I'm going to just, I'm going to pull a number from thin air here, because I haven't ran actually the calculations, but let's say we're ten percent under where we need to be, because when you look at a lot of that, it's we have unpaid bills, or we've done capital improvements, and this is what I was trying to get at with that lady that was here, is that you can talk about, well, budget for what it takes to run rate. Well, that's all well and good, but any given year is not going to just be a run rate discussion. It's going to be a new pump. It's going to be a new line. It's going to be this. It's going to be that. So, when you're talking budget, you can't decouple that from a question of risk, right? It's like, what line in town of the seventy percent that haven't been replaced in the last twenty-five years? Do you want a bet's not going to go bad in the next year?
Exactly.
And that's, that's kind of my point as well. I, I think we should do what she's saying. I'm not arguing that we shouldn't, but there can be a naivete towards this kind of perspective. It's just like, get your numbers right and things will be great. It's like, get your numbers right, because that's what you're supposed to do, and things still will suck, and you're going to, we'll make through, but...
And in a perfect world, people have readers that, meters that can be read all at once. They've got new pipes.
Yeah.
They don't have ancient, like, historical equipment.
Exactly.
In a perfect world, you can anticipate work, study expenses.
Yep.
Hey, David, let me call you back and...
I'm done, so I'm, I could be maybe your biggest. If I shut up, we move on.
Do it under a lot.
Yeah, we're ready for David.
Okay. David, we're ready for you. Timing is almost perfect. Okay, well, cool. I'm going to put you on speakerphone, and you've got four fifths of the council here.
Agreed.
And a couple of guests who actually happen to be leaders in Sprague.
Oh, excellent. Well, thank you very much for allowing me to talk through about this project. So, I'll give my introduction for the Sprague people, but my name's David Funk. I run a company called Zero Emissions Northwest, and we are focused on helping rural communities and agricultural producers manage their energy expenses. We have contracts with the USDA, but very recently, we've been looking more towards the Washington State market to see what other incentives there are for our eastern Washington communities, which are often underrepresented in any sort of state grant proceedings. So, and we actually have won a four hundred thousand dollars for Sprague to put solar on Sprague's high school, just like Harrington, which we're, I'll be at their school board in early November. So, welcomes, break. So, what we want to talk about is there is a Department of Commerce grant due November fourth called the Clean Energy Fund Development Grant, and it is for, lots of different people can apply, but it's basically for clean energy. So, there are going to be a number of resiliency projects applying. There are going to be a number of battery, sorry, solar projects applying. But what we want to talk about with the town council of Harrington is a potential project at the sewer district. So, just solar on the ground, which is, just like the Harrington School project, going to reduce those utility bills. Who'd actually, we've sized it to offset it completely, which would be about fifteen thousand dollars a year. And then we're also exploring a battery project at Harrington School District, which would be able to back up that school in its entirety for a number of days. So, in the summertime with the solar, it would be unlimited resiliency. In the wintertime, you would need to be a little bit more prudent of how you use energy without adding a generator, but it provides resiliency in the event of a natural disaster. So, looking at Medical Lake in Molden, how do we, you know, plan ahead and not wait till a disaster happens to think about resiliency? So, those are those two projects. What I am asking the town for at this point would just be a letter of support, and both of those projects are nonprofit partner, Partners for Rural Washington would be the lead applicant, and Zen would finance both projects. So, our goal is to have this be at no cost to the schools or to the town to apply, and at no cost to the schools or the town to install the system.
So, David, Creighton Ostrich, all you're asking from us is a letter of support then, correct?
For the school part of it.
For the school part, and then a letter of support to at least maybe get the ball rolling on putting panels up down at the sewer lagoons?
Correct. They would be two separate projects, but I would ask just one letter of support from the town. I don't think we need two pieces of paper.
Okay.
Did I forward that to you guys?
Yeah.
I've got a template here, okay. How long would you set it up?
It would have been Sunday. I, I have it, I think.
Sorry, it's a little hard to hear. Are those questions or just a discussion amongst the members?
There's mumblings.
Yeah, in terms of odds of winning the grants, I do think the battery project is a little bit more attractive to the Department of Commerce, because it is a flashier press release than just solar at a sewer district. But, you know, it, we've got this opportunity. Steve, Stephen asked me whether or not after the solar project at the school, if there's anything that we could do for the town, and this is a pretty non-invasive project at the sewer district that would have, you know, a financial benefit. So, we've got everything all set to apply for that project, actually.
Where does the school district fit into this? Have they been asked, or they support it?
Yes, they've been asked. Courtney is supportive, supportive of the project. We have not gone to the school board officially, but Courtney Strozak, the superintendent, said, yes, we're interested in, you know, helping you apply, provided it costs us nothing. And we've also talked to Avista about the battery project and having it provide grid services. The three hundred, you know, or the ninety-nine percent of the time when the grid is operating, and the one percent of the time when the community needs resiliency, the community gets that. But there is an opportunity for Avista to also support that project. And long-term, Avista's looking to design rate programs that would allow that battery to earn revenue. So, it could be a revenue generator for the school.
But typically, in your opinion, how much revenue are we talking in a year's time?
For a battery?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
At very little revenue today without Avista designing that program. They're mostly, you know, resiliency assets, which we won't build that project if we can't find the revenues to offset just the insurance cost or even maintenance cost. So, there's definitely more work to be done. But if we can win the money from Commerce and get some money from Avista for their named communities investment fund, that project can turn into a reality, but definitely other things to track down for sure.
Okay. And generally, what's the maintenance on a facility or, you know, contraption like this? I mean, batteries don't last forever.
Correct. So, the maintenance on a solar system at the sewer district would just basically be vegetation management. The maintenance on a battery is more annual inspections and insurance. Those are the, the two biggest costs. The batteries are remotely monitored. Battery lives are now right around five thousand cycles. So, this, this is probably a thirty-year battery from just the chemistry in it. What you do want to replace are the inverters, the fans, the cooling systems. So, those are the things that break more on batteries. But it, everything in that industry is going towards either lithium iron phosphate, which is very durable, even through cold temperatures, and/or sodium iron phosphate, which is extremely affordable, but that's not really yet at scale.
And given the complexity of these batteries and stuff, what's the safety for the children and the public and people at the school?
Yep, so we would not put it in the building. We would need to find an appropriate space that has all of the necessary setbacks. You do hear about battery fires, right? You hear about that in electric vehicles.
Right.
And there's some, you know, articles about, you know, large battery installations in California catching fire. Those are very uncommon, but generally, the systems are really around preventative monitoring, which is all fully automated. You know, we don't have anybody staring at the battery cell temperatures in real time. It would be automated systems and faults that would go off. But it really is about ensuring you're, the right distance away from any sort of structure. You don't want a lithium fire catching the school on fire.
Right. So, how big a footprint is this facility, do they estimate?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, the size of the battery would be one hundred and twenty-five kilowatts and seven hundred and fifty kilowatt hours. So, the way that you would, I would talk about it, that in the industry, it's a, it would be, it's a one hundred and twenty-five kilowatt battery, a four-hour duration. It's about the, you know, put four dumpsters together, and that's what you're looking at?
Okay. Do, do you need cooling? You need a, other stuff? They have to be climatized, I mean, they have to be kept at a certain temperature and all that stuff, too?
Yep. Yep, and that's fully integrated. The company that we're getting pricing from is a company called ELM, and that's actually the company that Avista's using at their microgrid up in Spokane at the Martin Luther Kings Community Center. So, we're basically designing this as a copycat of that project up there.
Okay. Well, I got one final question, and I'll let you off the hook. Is what, foreseeing future burden on taxpayers, school, and upkeep and maintenance of it? What responsibility, how much of an expense is this going to burden eventually the taxpayers who support the school? How, how much of an expense is that going to add to the upkeep, general? How much of an expense is that going to add to the upkeep, general upkeep of these things?
Yep. So there would be no personal property tax if the school were to own the asset or if a third party were to own the asset. And then as far as operations, maintenance, software, and insurance, in conversations with Avista, they want to create a program that will essentially pay the school for their rights to use the battery, if that makes sense. Avista can basically call on the battery remotely and ask it to charge or discharge depending on what the grid needs. Justin and I, my conversation this week with Avista, they're talking about about twenty thousand dollars per year. Ballpark, which would cover all of the costs for that asset.
Okay. Well, thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, of course. And in Washington, this is all brand new. There could be some energy savings for the school by shifting peak charges combined with the solar. But Washington is really in its infancy. And I think one of the important things to do is if we are successful at winning this grant, we have in our budget costs to work with the town of Harrington to make sure that resiliency and emergency preparedness plans are put in place that take into account this new asset. What I don't want to do is just win money and hand Harrington School District a battery and not, you know, provide the community with resiliency. There's two parts to that. One is the tool and the other is the plan. So we have in our, in our budget, some funds to go and make sure that we can actually help do that. Because we're building twenty-three school projects, just solar, next year. And I view this combination of solar and storage at schools as a replicable model for resiliency for Eastern Washington. So I would like to help Avista and these communities develop a plan. And Harrington is, you know, our first and, you know, most favorite project. So excited to try to continue to win money for the community and create meaningful change there.
One more last question. Is there any money for private homeowners through all this stuff to do the same thing?
Not in this clean energy grant funding from Commerce. There is, so for Harrington, the solar company that built that is a company called Ellensburg Solar. They're offering fifteen percent discounts to any community member of Harrington or Sprague or Davenport, any of the projects where our communities are benefiting from. Which replaces about the half of the tax credit is going away at the end of the year. And then battery storage, for my residential people that ask me this question, it's not really a good... Depending on how you view resiliency, I don't think the battery is a great investment for a homeowner. I think there are other better options for a homeowner, which provide better resiliency. And especially for those that live in rural Eastern Washington, I would say you can get a much bigger battery and a better price on a Ford Lightning EV truck, which can back up your house for five days. And it's got a cut holder.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Well, Joe, you guys can talk about it. I can work with you to put together a letter of support from the town council. But I'm not expecting you guys to make a decision right now. We do have the grant deadline is November fourth. So I will ask the town council to be, you know, punctual with getting back to me. But we do want to, we're going to be writing the grant all next week for all of these projects. So I appreciate the support from Harrington and the time tonight.
Okay. David, you've got one question from the gallery.
David, Tim from Sprague. Would you mind if I got your contact information from the mayor and reach out to you tomorrow about Sprague?
Please.
Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, David. Tell Ronnie hi.
Oh, I will tell Ronnie hi. Have a good night.
Uh-huh. You too. Thank you.
Okay. Our whole solar project didn't go through out at the farm.
See, mine did. This is, this is this month what I got.
No, we were really close and all of a sudden...
Your money disappeared. Well, that's the granting disappeared.
Everything just, all of a sudden, no calls back. So it kind of sucked.
Did you go through Ellensburg?
See, this was just with him. USDA grant.
This was kind of when things were getting shut down.
Yeah.
So he, his hands were tied, you know.
Right. Thank you. Like you mentioned, November fourth is when he's going to have stuff.
Yeah, like we're...
We're not going to be meeting, I don't think, between now and then, so...
I move that we send them the letter that he requested.
I second it.
Okay. First and a second to sign the support letter for the discussion.
This going through is not at any cost to the city whatsoever, right?
Especially on this, this is just saying that we support what they're trying.
Yeah, and as I understand it, David, this doesn't obligate us to anything at this point. It's just, it's saying we support the school, what they want to do, and for us, we're interested in going fishing.
Well, I get that part, but you know, a while back, we talked about Avista. We had a thing with Avista. And is this, their grid hookups and their, all that, is that going to throw a monkey wrench into anything in the future?
Technically, this isn't with, we aren't doing this, David is, which probably is beneficial considering our, as far as I'm aware, our ongoing TIF with Avista is still open, so.
Right.
Probably better that we're not the ones talking about this.
But is that, do you foresee anything, and that was probably pretty early, but do we foresee anything conflict with Avista wanting to build or do something with their grid? I'm not sure what's all involved or how extensive it's going to get, but anything that could, that we should be aware of or...
Well, the good thing is, we, it's on the table now. So if it is to be considered with our dealings with Avista, we can make sure it's...
The nice thing is, this is close to their substation, so if anything was to come up, it'd be logistically a lot better than if we had picked some other location in town to do this.
Well, that's where they needed it anyways for the... I don't know. I just, I guess we don't have a lot to say, but I mean, the school's doing it. But I just, as a large taxpayer for that school, how much of a burden? I mean, they're going to be asking, well, we need this, you know, going forward.
There is no burden. They're getting it all funded.
But five years from now.
They're, what, battery maintenance is one thing, but what they have on the roof, there isn't anything to it.
But I'm referring to the batteries.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Then are they going to have to build a separate structure to house that battery?
Yes.
I think they said they're going to look for something on site, but...
I don't know what's on site over there. It's not connected to the school.
There's the dungeon.
A dungeon?
I don't know. What do you guys know it has? That room where you, off the, where the bus?
That's where the old furnace was. It's the basement of the old high school, is what it actually is.
The boiler rooms?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, still, I mean...
That's where I'd look, but I'm not the person.
Can they put it in Colbert's barn?
Okay. They could put it across the street.
But nothing's for sure on this, right?
Probably for the grant. Oh, yeah. This, they still have to do the grant.
Yeah.
This is just, this is just saying, hey, you know.
We're just giving our endorsement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it just looks better on the grant.
Correct.
So it's not throwing a monkey into the wrench?
Not yet. Might be a gorilla in there.
Okay. Moving on, do we have any other discussion on this topic?
Okay. There's a motion on the floor.
Yes, there's a motion on the floor, so...
Go ahead.
No, I was just asking.
No, why?
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's a four zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. We do have an executive session to discuss some items, so we can... I don't know how long you guys want to set this aside for.
I have no idea how long we're going to pound this out. How long do you guys want to be here? I'd say if it's going to be like the last time, twenty minutes?
I think would be the most. Remember, if we say twenty minutes and we are done in ten, it's still twenty.
If I, if we're discussing what I think we're discussing, it should be shorter.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay. Then whatever, because I'm not sure, I'm privy to that info right now, so... You make the call, Mr. Mayor.
I can... Let me just do this. Before we get started, let me just print one more piece of paper.
I should have asked, was it a hundred percent grant or is it a loan matching grant or anything like that?
It's a hundred percent grant.
Remember, if we ever went forward with anything, there's lots of paperwork and contracts and...
Well, the nice way this all starts, David, is that if I understand it with the school, not only is it no cost us, but we don't even have to do the paperwork. Because he owns it for the first five years and sells us the electricity at a lesser rate than what it would get from Avista. So it all gets created without like Cassie or, well, I mean, Public Works will probably get impacted some because they'd be on our site. But in general, I think it's even lower impact than when we get free money, which is not still free.
Can, Stephen, can you set us up for ten minutes for the executive session?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to go into executive session at seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight.
Are you looking for something that was printed?
Did it print it?
No, I don't see anything.
Oh, crap. Okay, well...
Well, it's invisible. It's not there.
I wonder if that's out of paper.
You know what? I bet it is. Yep. Okay, where are you keeping it safe for?
No, I'll just print it on the other one. It's fine. Yes. We're extending for another five minutes. Executive session ending at eight ten. Yes. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight.
Are you looking for something that was printed?
Did it print it?
No, I don't see anything.
Oh, crap. Okay, well.
Well, it's invisible. It's not there.
I wonder if that's on a paper.
I you know what? I bet it is. Yep. Okay, where are you keeping your paper?
No, that's no, I'll just print it on the other one. It's fine. We're extending for another five minutes. Executive session ending at eight oh three. Yes. We're extending for another five minutes. Executive session ending at eight ten. Yes. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, so we're gonna go into executive session at. Seven forty-eight. We'll be back by seven fifty-eight. Okay, additions to the agenda. Um, main and second city property.
There's a shed sitting right on that corner that basically is sitting on top of the street sign.
Main and second. Okay.
Isn't it second up there? This is third here, so that's second.
Third, second.
Second, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay.
Across the street from the lumberyard.
Okay, bottom line, I will have, we'll take a look at it and we will get that addressed.
Okay, and then there's a old fuel truck and a CJ two A sitting with tires off of it, the two houses down from that, two.
This way?
Yep, towards us, to the west.
So basically that block.
Yeah.
Okay.
By old A and H Supply.
Yep. Tammy Putney's house is where this stuff is.
Okay. We will, we will look at it.
Huh?
Is it still her house?
No, she sold it.
That's it. It's where she lived.
Right, for the record.
And then the nor- north end of town parking again, it's they aren't parallel, but now they're doubled.
Yeah, they doubled up almost immediately.
Yeah, and I know that there's been some some concerns about the kids running out, and they do, they appear in the middle of the street and you have no.
No warning.
No warning at all, and I just don't wanna be the one that. Hits them, or I don't want anybody else to hit them.
Nobody wants to get hit soon. Go away. It's bad enough dodging the deer out on.
Yep.
So, okay, uh, thank you. I will address those. We've got a couple of things, so some mayor letters will be going out. Is that, is that?
Thank you. Thank you.
Just for your help, I think there there's something, I don't know what ordinance it is, I don't know if it's in our nuisance ordinance or whatever, but there is ordinance to back up double parking, how many vehicles in front of residents and all that stuff, so.
And just looking around town, there's travel trailers parked on city property, quite a few places. I mean, you can go just about every block and find something.
Well, speaking of which. Parking, um, Willis, that down here, across from Edmondson, lived in that house, you know.
The superintendent's house.
Yeah, okay, that, it goes way back, guys. They built a, it looks like a kind of a picket fence, they've encroached out there, I believe on city property, I'm not a hundred percent on that. But they're parking out, so the vehicle's out, that road is continuously getting narrower and narrower and narrower.
Willis itself?
Yes. Between a fifth and a fourth. Or the new line, where we put the new water line in, that whole street.
Between fourth and fifth.
Fourth and fifth, it just seems like that's getting a little narrower all the time. And, you know, you don't have to pistol whip anybody, but I mean, just go down there and go, hey, you're gonna have to find a different place. Once we get into snow removal.
In all fairness, I think we will just do an assessment of the entire city so everyone will get comment into it is.
There you go.
I like that.
I like it.
Thought we'd handle it. Okay, we are ready to approve the consent agenda?
I move approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, any discussion?
Negative.
Yet.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, noted items to address in the consent agenda, so, mayor's comments, I'll just hit the downstairs area. So. We went along with our plan, we made arrangements, we got the hose down there and at a hundred and twenty feet, the hose did not have enough suction. So, uh, so I did some other research, I probably should have done this to begin with, but whatever, I talked to some people who do mitigation work. That's all they do, and they just looked at me and chuckled and said, yeah, nothing, there's not a piece of equipment out there that goes over a hundred feet without, with any kind of suction. They said they hate them, they hate those jobs because it's all labor. So we were gearing up for labor, fortunately, somebody appeared on a raider, raid R. And I can tell you that ninety-eight percent of the mud is out and gone.
Cool.
Um, it's all been scooped up, channeled up, taken away, hauled away, what's left is, the guys will go down there this week. I don't know exactly what day. But the plan is, is basically they will clean with a hose, they'll vacuum it up with a shop vac. They'll dump the shop vac into the garbage can that is down there and then they will pump that water out to the drain. So, it will stay relatively clean, we'll have one, one garden hose that basically just snakes out to the outside and we'll just pump it all, what's left out there. But it's, the only thing that they want to do that hasn't been done is they're gonna physically pull the shelves. If you guys haven't seen, there's some built-in shelves down there, they'll pull them off the wall to make sure that that underneath there is cleaned out also, so.
Just ensuring that when that garden hose is used, that we aren't introducing water into something that's already been blown out or that we blow it out again afterwards?
Oh, no, no, the water, the lines are all blown, the water lines and irrigation lines are already blown out. There's actually a spigot down there. So, well, there's not now, there's, there's access to a spot that will have a spigot and it'll just, instead of running a garden hose down there, there'll be a garden hose that they can connect to rate in the basement.
To use.
So. So it'll be better than, well, quite honestly, it doesn't look bad right now, it's probably almost as good as the one we got originally with just the dust and debris that was down there when we rented it, so.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So, there's no sump, no sump pump down there?
Correct.
Um, just going forward, I don't know the history, if it's ever flooded much before, but.
It gets wet every single time.
Concerning the owners.
They do know, they do know that their foundation, when they use the sprinkler system or. Actually, it's pretty much a sprinkler system, which is ironic because a heavy rain doesn't do the same thing, but when they use a sprinkler system, there's enough porous in the foundation that it seeps through this side, this side, this north side. So, right now, when it's dry, it's an opportune time to get it all cleaned up and done so that anything that happens after that, you know, is just force measure on them, so.
Okay, thank you.
The only other thing I'll hit on, I don't want to get too much into it because we won't have a light. Um, I had a meeting with. In Spokane yesterday morning with our wastewater engineer, Claire Miller was there facilitating it. From Commerce and then various heads of ecology. I think we will, well, by November fourth, I will know if we're back on track or if the meeting was a waste of time. I'm hoping that we're back on track with getting a plan to get that place modified. In a perfect world, I wanted it done this year, that's not gonna happen, but in a perfect world, maybe by the end of the first quarter, twenty twenty-six, November twelfth, treatment plant modification is done in the books and out of our lives.
It's been a while.
Um, last thing, um, we are. Cassie, what was the date for the pump that he was targeting?
Next week.
Next week?
Next week, yeah.
So, well, let's just be generous and say in the next two weeks, we will have well one of an operation.
Okay, great. So, you, you had a discussion with him about the risk profile of that and what did he say?
He, yeah, oh, very much so, um, he said he would get everything out, he would, he knows that when he's going down there, he's pretty good at knowing if something's jamming up and it's, and it's too much of a problem. But he also agreed, you know, he's gonna go down at least seventy feet, which is what was there before, but he thinks he can go down even further. Um, without it binding on, I discovered just today that actually that hole is, was said back in nineteen.
Fourteen.
No, oh, that one, yes, yes, getting the two mixed up, I'm not the problem. No, that one, yeah, that one's three hundred feet deep, if you, if you read the nineteen, when they re-drilled it, that's how deep it's supposed to be.
They did it in fifty-six, they straightened it.
Yeah, fifty-six and fifty-seven, yeah, so that's when they re-drilled it, and so hypothetically, it's three hundred feet deep.
Which could make a considerable difference.
So.
Going down further, because normally it wouldn't keep up, it would, you know, whatever, but there's probably a ratio.
So how deep is he gonna hang it if he can go down?
Worst, worst case scenario.
Well, the worst case at the seventy, what's the best case scenario?
Well, best case scenario is he's planning on going down a hundred and twenty.
Is that, if you do have three hundred feet, is that normal to leave half of it?
It's, from what I read, it's not uncommon that there's quite a bit of free space.
It depends on.
Static level.
The static level and then also, I mean, my son-in-law just put one in yesterday and it was hanging at one thirty and they went down to one eighty and the well is two twenty. So it just, and, but you gotta have a pump that can lift it that extra sixty feet too.
Yeah, and the recovery rate in the static does all play into where the water level is.
Yeah, but right now the static's damn near ground level, isn't it?
His, his opinion was, it's a, it's a good well, it's a good producing well, just from what his experience was when he ran the camera down there. So, he was gonna put the camera, he was gonna watch the video again very, very closely and, um, I've out. We got a box of information back which has a tremendous amount of history on these things, so I've found that I can tell him how much, he's, he's looking for about eighty feet of air tape.
Metal.
Air tape from the fifties when it went in.
Okay, yeah.
So. But it also helps knowing that it's three hundred feet deep, that if he gets stuff out, then, you know, there's something, that's a long ways down there that the rest of that air tape fell.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I got.
Almost kind of like a common.
Anything additional, public comments?
Do you guys do a city newsletter?
No.
Well, kind of.
Uh, I've taken to, on our utility bill, it was a blank piece of paper, so we put notes and public announcements and suggestions.
With your whole narrow, road narrowing, I didn't know if it'd be, to make it kind of a blanket statement, a reminder to the city. The citizens that, hey, there's ordinance that say this, just a reminder, they all get the city utility bill.
Yeah, yeah, it's stunning the number of people who don't realize anything's written on the back of it.
You mean put a little slip in them?
We have, we've put notes on the plan, hey, read the back.
Well, write pink, we're gonna say, to make it, so you're not finger pointing, you're making a reminder to everybody that.
The one disadvantage with having the water bills being fairly stable, is I know a lot of them, self-included, they always, the only's even, always open them. Cause I know how much they pay in.
Yeah.
So, just for clarifications, on November twelfth, we have a six o'clock workshop, correct?
That, okay, so to prepare you, November twelfth is going to be a heavy meeting, just adds up. We've got a public, we have to go through a public hearing. Um, it would be nice if we could have, um, my plan is to have a preliminary budget for you guys to look at, to start beating up on.
Okay, but we still have to establish what rates were proposing.
Yes.
And we did not get that done here tonight.
No.
So we need another meeting between here and the twelfth.
Okay.
Cassie's like, what?
No, no, I'm looking at the calendar.
Or a workshop and then Cassie doesn't need to be here.
Workshop, probably better.
I'm not trying to make you spend after hours, I don't think we, nothing personal, but I don't think we need Cassie here, she can have her time.
So.
Can we have a morning workshop?
Do we or you want one?
Well, I would like it to be more in the morning than.
We can do workshops whenever you want, I just, it's my work availability which would be.
Well, you tell us when your work availability.
So I have a lot of meetings that are at seven thirty and eight o'clock.
Okay.
Uh, I just have to be at my desk at.
In Spokane or home?
Home. Uh, I just have to be at my desk at nine. But quite honestly, a workshop, I don't necessarily have to be here the entire time.
That's nice. Saturday morning, if that's not completely objectionable with you.
When?
Saturday morning.
This Saturday morning?
No, I said a Saturday.
Saturday morning?
I'm working on my shop.
I'm working for a boss. She's not watching.
As far as you know, right?
I can, I'll, I can do whatever with some room.
I could be here too.
While it's fresh?
If you can have actual numbers for us that we need to do, I would, you got numbers for us?
I got a spreadsheet, well, I, I have a look at what we are currently charging supposedly. I've talked with Cassie and it's harder to establish than you'd think, but close enough to all we're gonna get for what we're currently charging and what we, is in the current proposal. And I can also project things within the course of the meeting, within a few minutes, I can say, say, well, if we changed it by this, what would it be? And I can see for twenty twenty-five, what would people have paid, what would the highest amount have been, what would the lowest amount have been and that stuff.
On my laptop so I can bring up any of the signatures on it.
You tell me when and I'll be here, besides.
The only, the only other thing that's happening on Saturday is we are, it's the Halloween. Thing that we do, where we're gonna shut down the road for a couple hours for.
Well, what time is that? It's in the afternoon, I have to go check. In the morning, get it all.
Yeah. I thought, you named the time on Saturday morning and.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock?
This Saturday?
Yes.
Supposed to be raining, go ahead.
Okay. You're not chopping, are you? Do we, do we have, do we have enough, we have to announce we're having a workshop, do we have enough time to formally announce? No, it's a lot Saturday.
Quite a bit.
Is it still forty-eight hours?
I think it's forty-eight hours. That, the amount of time never sticks in my head real clear for some reason, I think it's forty-eight hours.
We don't have to post the agenda, we just have to, we just have to post it. Eight AM Saturday for a workshop.
Let's try not to make it all morning.
Here, here, half hour.
Should be.
Okay. We'll all go to have Janice make us come out for breakfast.
Yeah, there you go. Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, first and second, and all in favor, say aye.
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 I'm going home.
We need to sign though, we need paper signs.
I will.